We can start with presentation then. All right, Danielle, can you start the presentation?
Yes, I am.
Oh, and also, we have an hour for this. It's a very dense presentation, so let's save questions for the end.
There we go. Okay. Good, good evening. My name is Claudia Chang, and I'm the Deputy Director in the City Manager's Budget Office. Today, Sal and I will be giving a presentation on the capital budget. And there is a picture right there for you to see of some of the capital projects that have been constructed for our, in the middle of construction. Today, I'm going to give you an overview of the proposed budget and go in detail regarding the funding sources for the capital program. And then I'm going to pass it off to Sal, Public Works, to give a brief overview of each of the capital programs and highlight some of the key projects, as well as briefly touch on the deferred maintenance and infrastructure backlog report. And of course, the budget could not have been developed without the assistance of the staff in the various departments, many of which are in the room today. So I want to acknowledge their efforts and say a big thank you because without them, there'd be no budget.
Oh, thanks.
Okay. So the next slide just kind of shows how our capital program is divided up, and it's by city service area. So we have six city service areas. It's community and economic development, environmental and utility services, neighborhood services, public safety, transportation, aviation services, and strategic support. And then within those city service areas, you can see each of the various capital programs. And so the largest CSA, environmental and utility services has four city service area, four capital programs within that city service area. Next slide. The proposed budget for 2425 is $5.3 billion. But that's for all city funds, and the focus today is on the capital budget, which is $1.1 billion of the total budget, which makes up 21% of the, of the total budget. Most of the funds have restricted use. Examples of capital funds in this category are the Treatment Plant Capital Fund, which accounts for construction improvements of the water pollution control plant, construction and conveyance tax, construction excise tax, and building instructor construction fund. Special funds make up 52% of the budget, and it's the largest boost by far at $2.8 billion. They have a distinct function or enterprise. Example of funds in this category are operating funds that track the revenues and expenditures for the water pollution control plant, sanitary sewer collection system, garbage collection and recycling services, the airport, and San Jose Clean Energy. The general fund makes up $1.4 billion and is about 27% of the total budget. The largest general fund expenditures are for personal services or staffing. Public safety departments make up 50% of the costs, with police having a budget of over $532 million, fire department having a budget of $287 million. And then the next largest general fund departments are Parks and Recreation and Neighborhood Services and Public Works Department. The next slide provides a picture of the capital improvement program over a 10-year period. And you can see that for the next five years, the budget totals $3.7 billion, and that will cover fiscal year '25 through fiscal year '29, the last column that's in gold. Once funds to complete existing projects are rebudgeted from this fiscal year to next, then the total budget is going to be higher than the $3.7 billion that's listed there. You'll, you may be interested to know, for fiscal year 2024, the budget is $4 billion, and that's the largest out of all the years. And the reason for this is because in November 2018, San Jose residents passed the Measure T Disaster Preparedness, Public Safety, and Infrastructure Bond. This measure authorized the city to issue up to $650 million of general obligation bonds for investments in city infrastructure, including upgrades to emergency and disaster response facilities, road construction, flood protection, water quality protection, and improvements to other critical infrastructure. There's more details about Measure T allocations is going to be provided in the upcoming slide. If you're wondering about the source of the capital improvement program, it's listed here on this slide. So of the $3.7 billion capital program, these are the different categories. So most of the funding is going to be coming from financing proceeds. And then we have contribution loans and transfers, revenue from other agencies, beginning fund balance, taxes, fees, and charges, and then the smaller categories with only $95 million or $9.8 million for miscellaneous revenues. We'll go into detail for each of that, for the top five categories in the next couple of slides. Okay, so the top category that we have is financing proceeds, which is just under $875 million. In the Water Pollution Control Capital Program, close to $360 million of wastewater revenue notes and bond proceeds are used for the implementation of capital improvement projects identified in the plant master plan. We also have financing proceeds totaling $230 million that will fund a portion of the construction costs for the belly freight facilities and short-term parking garage at the airport. Bonds will also be issued for the Measure T program, totaling close to $210 million for projects in the traffic capital program, public safety, storm sewer, and parks capital programs. And then lastly, commercial paper will be issued in the parks capital program for work related to the 2017 floods, as well as the 2023 winter storms. Next slide. The next highest category is contribution loans and transfers at $774 million. And so the largest transfer by far is from the Sewer Service and Use Charge Fund to pay for projects in the Water Pollution Control Capital Program and the Sanitary Sewer Capital Program. So fees paid by the users of the sanitary sewer collection system are used to pay for capital progress, capital projects in both of these capital programs, as well as some of the operating costs. The next largest transfer is from the Airport Surplus Revenue Fund to the Airport Capital Fund, capital fund to pay for capital improvement projects at the airport. The general fund actually contributes about $53.9 million, and the main costs are really for, to replace fire apparatus, as well as radios and the communications program. Next slide. So we do receive quite a bit of revenue from other agencies, which adds up to the $728 million. From federal, from the federal government, we received close to $206 million, and mainly it's for TSA, FAA grants for airport projects and various one-bay area grants in the traffic program. There was over, there was just over $87 million in the traffic program for federal grants. In the state category, we received just under $200 million. And we have state funding in the traffic program totaling $170 million, with over $140 million for pavement maintenance projects. And then we also received money from Caltrans for large trash capture devices totaling close to $18 million in the storm sewer capital program. The regional wastewater facility, or the water pollution control plant, the uses of that system contribute close to $190 million for capital projects. And we use that money to pay for capital projects at the plant. And then the last category that we have is revenue from local agencies, which is the $136 million that you see there. And most of the funding is from the Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority to fund pavement maintenance projects. That's making up close to $130 million of that piece of funding. Next slide. And of course, one of the other sources of funding for the cattle projects is our beginning fund balance, which is $613 million. So what this represents is money that's carried over from prior years. So there are plans for most of this money pending the determination of final scope for projects, final project locations, and our availability of future funding. And you can see most of the funding is, we have one of the capital funds that's called Building and Structure Construction Tax, $102 million has been carried over from prior years, and that funds traffic projects. We have the Sewer Service and Use Charge Capital Fund, we have $86 million in the beginning fund balance, Park Trust Fund, which helps fund capital projects in the parks program, $73 million. Construction Excise, which is $73 million that funds traffic projects. And then we have the Public Safety and Infrastructure Bond, which is $71 million that's spread on various capital programs. And then the next category is taxes, fees, and charges, which add up to be close to $560 million. And the largest category by far in this group here is $240 million from construction and conveyance taxes, which is primarily generated by the transfer tax imposed on the transfer of real property. Due to the slowdown in the local real estate market, CNC collections are anticipated to be about $35 million this year, and the next year is going to increase to just $40 million, which is significantly below our record-setting amount of $65 million that was collected in '21, '22. Based on city council-approved distribution formula, this money is just distributed to parks, libraries, fire, service yards, park yards, and communications program. The next category that we have is the airport facility charge proceeds, which is $136 million. And that facility charge is a fee charged to every in-plain passenger at the San Jose-Manetta International Airport. Proceeds are used for debt service or capital projects. The next highest category would be Building and Structure Construction Tax at $94 million, and it's imposed on the construction, repair, or improvement of any building or structure where a building permit is required. The proceeds are used to, are restricted by ordinance and used for the traffic capital program. And then the next category we have is Construction Excise, and which is also referred to as a commercial residential mobile home park building tax. It's imposed on construction, alteration, repair, improvements of any building or structure that is for residential or commercial purposes or associated with a mobile home. And then we have other fees that are collected, which amount to about $5.2 million. And if you're curious on the next slide, thank you, it'll show how the money is kind of divvied up among the different programs over the five-year period. And so we have, amazingly, we have a very, we have a tie, the top two, which is Water Pollution Control and the Traffic Capital Program. That's really unusual. And then the next largest capital program would be Airport, Parks, Sanitary Sewer, and so forth down the line. And now I'm going to pass it off to Sal.
Thank you, Claudia. I'm again Sal Kumar, Deputy Director of Public Works, colleague, metronome. We must see the entire CIP, another repertory with public works. So this slide right here is just an overview of the CIP development. As to the left, the CIP program is developed with the city staff knowledge as a performance along with the, the city's 2040 general plan, master plans, and our core direction from the mayor's budget master, city council direction and commission, working together to develop this CIP. All right, this time I'd like to, it's a team affair actually, and I'd like to take the time to recognize and thank our partner departments that lead us and, and work with the public works and work on our, working closely in delivering the projects. Next slide, please. So this slide right here is Measure T. As you're aware, in 2018, San Jose voters approved the Measure T bond, which provided about $60 million in general obligation bonds for the wide variety of infrastructure needs, such as street repairs, public safety, flood prevention, LED lighting, and community and community centers. I'll give the plans venture in next five years. This, this should, and I'll be your next year, next five years. We continue to focus on designing construction of multiple projects, due to highlights such as street paving, fire stations, police training center. And along the presentation, I'll be discussing mentioning some of the parties that are funded through these programs. Next slide, please. So we have two cluster systems in San Jose, sanitary sewer and storm sewer. Sanitary sewer is a larger one, and it consists of about 200 miles of sewer systems, mains, as well as covers a city center, the other three sections, and convinces sewers to the San Jose-Santa Clara Regional Wastewater Facility. The project priorities include, as you can see from the list, support the goal of preventing sewer overflow, manage system capacity and system conditions, as well as improve sewer capacity and evaporate existing sewers that are dirty. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, the storm sewer system is smaller than the two, $91 million, $500 CIP. The storm sewer consists of about 1,700 miles of sewers, mains, and 31 storm pumps. This is separate from sanitary sewer system and collects storm water that eventually conveyed storm water into the two major waterways in San Jose, which are Caidi Creek and Spalver River. A key focus for the CIP over the next few years will be delivery of trash capture devices, which is managed by baykeepers. The Measure T funded projects, we are focusing in a chocolate area to alleviate flooding and drainage issues, as well as a few, a couple of regional green stormwater projects to capture and put the tree stormwater before it's discharged into local waterways. Next slide, please. Water pollution control, this is the San Jose wastewater facility. Our double here is a wastewater treatment facility serving eight south-based cities and four special districts. The program priorities include, include obtaining adequate capacity for wastewater treatment, adapt, and implement new technologies for wastewater, maintain operate our with all the local state requirements. The development of the CIP is, or proposed CIP is gathered by the plant master plan, which is PMPs of over 2 billion over 30 years, and will implement about 114 CRPs. As you can see from the list, the focus in upgrades, and we have the projects. Next slide, please. Water utility system, capital program, the San Jose Municipal Water System provides water services to approximately 2,600 customers in five San Jose areas. They're Aldiso, Los Angeles, Caidi Valley, Edenvale, and Evergreen. The key focus of CIP include construction of new facilities, maintenance of existing infrastructure, and improvements to water dirty system. One of the key projects in the CIP includes the water resource admin building, S E J F is here, and it's continuing construction, and the goal is to get budget completed by next fiscal year. Next slide, please. Library. The library capital program objective is to provide accessible, quality library services to the residents of San Jose. The CIP focus provides funding to acquire physical electronic materials, install automation equipment and system, and support facility repairs and improvements. Some of the work funded by building for library infrastructure bond, a grant, includes building repairs and ongoing maintenance, repairs to boilers, chillers heating, venting, and cooling system, as well as replacement of floorings and repair of this, and insulation security systems. Next slide, please. Parks and community facilities. The park, and this program is managed by Parks, Rec, and Neighbor Services, known as PRNS, that provides oversight of planning and development of over 3, 3,600 acres of parks, open spaces, 12 city operated community centers, and as well as 65 miles of public access for trails. The proposed CIP focus on efforts in maintaining and improving park facilities such as, free to name as listed on this, on the slide here, are the Kettle Park, Channel Park, and Door Park, Cut Block, as well as Gualdo River Park Yard relocation, community centers, and obviously master plan. Next slide, please. Public safety, the major focus of public safety CIP is to deliver projects funded by Measure T bond, fund, roughly about $100 million allocated to various projects. Few parties to highlight that listed here is the Fire Station 32, where some of the open bids on them, we're hoping to go on construction by the summer or fall. Relocation of fire station like, Fire Station 8, San Santa Clara Street is currently in construction. Police Training Center also is in construction. And recently, we started construction on the PD Hanger project by the airport, on common avenue. Next slide, please. Airport, so the, and so, many of the airport, it's classified by the Federal Aviation demonstration of the multi-house management airport with some internal services. Airport priorities include drive road, innovate, fund the future, and invest in organization. As, as the, the CIP continues to focus on projects and find them out, the plan to improve safety and increase passenger services. Some of the priority projects include short-term parking garage, belly freight project, and terminal B ramp, we have a vision. Next slide. The parking CIP maintains and improves existing parking facilities, upgrades and raises both on-street and off-street parking equipment, and develops new parking facilities. They manage eight grides, six service slots, about 700 parking spaces and 2,500 meter parking spaces, Dallin Downtown, Javentown, Simi, the center area, and Yonan area. The CIP includes the rehabilitation of aging garage, elevator, elevators, and curb, the other part, new program is curb, digitalized and private program, is to modernize on street parking, data collection analysis, and use of curb space. Next slide, please. The traffic CIP elements and manages multimodal transportation system that is safe, efficient, environmentally sensitive, and maintaining the best condition possible. And including investment targeted toward providing safe streets for all modes of travel, balanced transportation support, ongoing initiatives such as better by 2025, Vision Zero, and General Plan 2040. As I mentioned, the payment transportation infrastructure maintenance program, they also manage that, includes paving and maintenance of roads and bridges. They maintain a supposedly 25-hour miles of pavement. Some of the projects to highlight, the current construction of McKeere Road and Tower projects, local multiborough projects, there are bikeways, and Fernando, and stories in Keys, and two major regional projects, I280 Manchester and Raw 11 Liberty, but, but it's. Next slide. Communication. The communication CIP funds incremental to communications facilities and provide reliable and associated communication to the city employees. The proposed CIP allocates ongoing funding to help replace regions that will be the end of service states. There are about 31 radios, police and fire. Next slide, please. Municipal improvements. The municipal program CIP provides improvement and maintenance of facility facilities and operating systems. The goals program to develop maintain functional city facilities that meet the service needs of both internal and external customers. The CIP includes physical service, clarity, lack, and version that's funded through Measure T, conversions that are rehab, repair work, various programs at the end, more custom services. Next slide, please. Service yards. Currently, we maintain four service yards. And the goal is to maintain and improve the existing condition that the city service out by implementing projects that reduce safety hazard, provide necessary equipment and material corporations. Some of the major projects on, including roof replacements, a new fielding island, as well as water main replacement, essential service under the container room. Two more slides ago, I promise. The next one is developer assisted project. The developer assisted project CIP, which includes multiple road 28 and 22 underground projects. The project evolved working closely with company companies. To note, the 28 projects are funded by a company, primarily led by PGME. And the 22 program is developed by end of the year by the city. So those are two programs probably that the city works on, on other main projects. And then next slide, please. Next slide. Thanks. So defined mainly to the aperture of Black Book, this, this program provides, the report provides analysis of unfunded infrastructure and ongoing maintenance needs. It includes 14 discrete programs in San Jose. In the 2024 report, we've included, well, reported 1.5 billion in funding needs, with additional around $30 million needed annually to maintain the city infrastructure. The, that went to TNE Committee on April 8, 2024. If that is. Yes, thank you. So this is an overview of all the programs that's included in the DMIB. The largest backlog includes building facilities, park fails, and community facilities, storm sewer, and transportation. Next slide, please. So this concludes my presentation. This is the rendering of the Fire Station 32 on, on the court. It's near 101 Story Road. As I mentioned, we just received bids on them, and we're hoping to start construction here in the summer, fall, the fall. Staff from all the departments are here. If you have any questions, or just want to. You don't mind if we continue on just.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I expected this to be much longer presentation. Yeah, all right, all right, yeah, so let's open it up for questions. Yeah. Yeah, go ahead. Sure. Thank you. I had a quick question about the short-term care for parking garage. Obviously, airport travel to, through SJC is still recovering to pre-pandemic levels. Was curious how staff was thinking about the phasing of this project, since I understand it's enabled the terminal extension, kind of in light of the ongoing recovery.
Thank you very much. I'm going to keep the question over to Judy Ross, Assistant Director from the Airport Department.
Hi, thank you for the question. You're an enterprise fund, so we look at our forecast all the time. We know our traffic is spot, so that is, we're watching that very closely. But we will not start in projects before the passengers at a certain level. We need the capacity, and we have a plan of financing place. So that is an enabling project, but as you saw through the presentation, this year, we're focusing on the Belly Car Co., which is a three-year project. So we'll focus on that, then focus on the garage, and then, and where our passengers are at. And we need the capacity, and we have funding. Well, folks, that's.
Amazing, thank you. So I guess, in one of the charts with the five-year plan, you know, had some money penciled in for future years. I guess it's the case, if that's not necessarily set in stone there, it's, it did follow those other factors.
Yes, for sure. The budget process is a long process. So when we were about nine, six, nine months ago, that's where we thought we'd be, but like you said, our passengers haven't been recovering since pre-COVID. And we've been, recovery we've experienced for the last several years since it flat, and we're projecting probably another couple of years to flat.
Even though it is a, we do say it's a five-year plan, but it's just a plan. And what really matters is what we're budgeting for 2425. So like Judy said, things can change. Hopefully, things will get better as far as passenger activity levels go, and so then we'll adjust accordingly.
I have another question. How do you identify key projects? I'm looking specifically at traffic. I'm going to pass it over to Jessica, Deputy Director.
Thank you for having us all. I'm Jessica, Deputy Director in the Transportation. So we identify key projects in a variety of ways for the capital program specifically. One of them, I think Sal mentioned, actually, general plan at a very high level. We have found that the level of detail in the plan doesn't get us enough clarity. So we also have started doing area plans from a transportation perspective. We typically go out for grant funds to actually get those going. And those do help us focus in on particular areas, usually areas near urban villages, because those are anticipating the greatest change. And then that helps us drill into the kind of project and program level for a particular area. We also, again, this is just high level, not a specific example. We also typically will need to line those priorities up with funding. Because, you know, our funding as a city is usually, usually just the local match for a grant that we then bring in. So the other factors that the granting agencies look at, many of them are very important to us as well. Top of mind for both us, and then granting agencies, safety. Another huge priority is, is where are the needs, where are the equity considerations? And then what kind of sustainability or other livability benefits capital? So it's kind of all those things, but we try to do the community planning, get to projects, and then match those projects up with funding sources to make them real, which is when they show up in the CIP.
Yeah, I mean, of course, safety is like so important, pedestrian safety, and obviously we want pedestrian. Yeah, I mean, of course, safety is like so important, pedestrian safety, and obviously we want pedestrians in the city, we love, you know, we've been pushing for more bicycles. Near my house, there was a, an accident, somebody, a cyclist died yesterday. And he was a very young person on Santa Rosa Capital Expressway. And so Andrew Hill High School is there, there's Rockwood Ship. I mean, I'd like to see, obviously, you know, there was another, uh, young student from Silver Creek who passed away on Capitol Expressway in like. Silver Creek in King, and my mother was so upset about it that it made me upset about it because it upset my mother so much, right? And, um, so of course I know that, um, you know, expressways are under the jurisdiction of the county. I'd like to see a little bit of collaboration and like maybe using G I S to pinpoint with, um. You know, the local, you know, police to identify where these incidents happen to bring more funding specifically to areas where people have lost lives. Um, just in memory of these people because it's, it's not appearing, that's these people, this young man who had that yesterday. So, I mean, even like a police crossguard there, if there's just so many vehicles going fast, I'd like to see like traffic. Studies, traffic coming measures and definitely improvements on the ground like now, right?
Yeah, um, we're, we're coming a ways, it's tragic and it. Even persons are not gonna come in time for yesterday. Um, but the positive news is that we do have funding that is going to improve. Safety for people walking and biking and other roadway users along center. We also did get a federal grant, uh, called Safe Streets and Words for All, that has one of our first real kind of, uh, infrastructure collaboration with the county on safety projects. Uh, two of the, um, intersections that we've identified funding for through that program are county city jurisdictions, which is good to do that, so thank you.
Yeah, and what about is, do you have like a staff that's dedicated just for grant writing for some of this?
That's a great, that's a great question. So we do have a staff that is dedicated to the vision zero program and they do do that data and, and mapping, um, that you were suggesting. It is absolutely integral to our vision zero program, how we identify, uh, with police and counting with others, priority state headquarters. So we do have that team. We have two people. Who are responsible for coordinating all of our grant writing within the Department of Transportation. And that is, uh, the grant writing, the grant acceptance, the paperwork, the working with the funding organizations through the life of the project. They're assisted a lot with our colleagues from Public Works who actually helped us design and deliver the project. Um, but we do have two humans who are, uh, you know, integral to getting all of that, that funding.
I mean, I know, I mean.
Sure, I actually have a follow up question, if that'll be okay. Um. Actually, I wanted to say something first. Thank you to all the staff that put this together. I think that this is the third year that I've reviewed it on the mission. It's amazing. Amazing, amazing, huge amount of work and it's really well written and readable. So I just, for all of you here, thank you for being here also and just please pass on your staff. Um. Um, so my follow up question was, um, I didn't see any funding for traffic cameras and I know that, that. We, we were in a pilot program, I believe, so I was just curious about that.
We are, it's a great, great question. Um, there is funding, uh, for automated speed enforcement in this budget. Um, you know, it's, uh, uh, at least a down payment and can really help us get going, but we're really trying to get to the pilot program that you mentioned. For those who weren't following us closely, uh, last year for the first time, state enabled automated speed enforcement in six pilot cities throughout California. And, uh, we are one of them, uh, we're really large supporters throughout the rest of the state to get that passed. Uh, it enables for a city of our size, thirty three camera locations to be deployed. Uh, they have to be in certain areas with considerations around where the crashes have happened, where the need is greatest, where the speeding is greatest. And also have to have a, a really robust, uh, to agree with education and, um. Engagement process to finalize where those will be. So that has not happened yet. That will happen later this year. So there is, uh, two million in C I P funding and four hundred and sixty mil.
Four hundred and four hundred, yeah, there's four hundred thousand.
For this year. For this year and then an ongoing million to kind of get that program up and running, keep going. Thanks for asking.
Sure. Do you, do you have any idea when, when the first cameras might be in operation?
We are hoping for late twenty twenty five, right? That would be the, that this next year, now that we are getting hopefully the budget approved, that that then lets us to do the final work on. Confirm with the community about the locations, getting the procurement complete. Uh, you know, most cities are pursuing a venture to partner with on, on these efforts. Uh, and then, uh, we'll, we'll go now.
Okay, great, thank you.
May I add, the money is actually, um, Jessica's right, there's two million from the traffic capital program. And then the majority of the money will actually come from the operating, on the operating side. So it's gonna be an eight to ten year pilot, it's gonna cost sixteen million dollars. So I'm hoping that it'll be grant funding, yeah, um, and then we'll look at general fund or other funding sources as well, the program.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. So follow up question on that. Are there any injuries, issues, problems with capitals, uh, I'm in Expressway County on places. Determining where the cameras actually go, are there issues there?
You know what, um, let me double check that because I definitely for sure, thank you.
I have a follow up question too. What is, what are you anticipating the community involvement in where, where you're placing these? Some obviously come from data analysis and traffic and accidents, um, as my colleague was mentioning, but some. Probably should have some community input.
Absolutely. So that is part of, um, the process, both because, uh, we agree that that's important. And because the author of the bill agreed that that was important, so it's actually legislated in addition to kind of what, what we would also wanna do. So that process, um, you know, with some of the budgets that's proved would, would be able to kick off. Um, will bring to that process some of the technical analysis, right? That underpins where they are allowed by the bill, where the biggest issues that we see are, and then kind of some. Uh, guidance about potential recommendations. There are also provisions in the bill. To make sure that they're not too concentrated in any given area. That's more of the issue.
What, what, do you have any idea what the community, uh, involvement would be in this process? I'll, I'll tell you specifically why. Uh, there are a number of areas specifically within communities that are not monitored by the police. So you might have sparse speeding reports, things like that, if the community isn't actively pursuing that with kind of traffic. So how would you actually engage the community, I would assume each district in that process?
Yeah, so we haven't finished fleshing out the full engagement plan for it, so I think it's great input. But there will be both, um, you know, partners from community based organizations who have helped us take into consideration, uh, issues like that, like where. Either our crash data may be incomplete or speeding data and other records may be incomplete. Um, and we'll set up kind of that advisory committee, um, I don't wanna get too married to the language. But advisory committee in addition to kind of more traditional going out to the public and even, but I think it's a really great point.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I also just, um, Mr. Young's suggestion, we do have fifteen minutes remaining, so I just wanna make sure that folks have questions on other topics that there's. We'll give them an opportunity to ask that too.
Yeah, actually, I know this sounds facetious, so I'll apologize in advance. Uh, what's the plan for parks, um, with so much, uh. Work not being done in deferred maintenance? I, I mean, is it to go out of business in five years or what, what's the plan go forward here?
I'm gonna kick the question regarding parks to Randy Costantino from Parks Recreation Neighborhood Services.
Sure, thank you. Thanks for the question. So our plan is not to go out of business in five years, so we do have an extensive backlog of deferred maintenance. But, um, as you can see from this report, you know, this year we're contributing about four hundred million in, uh, project funding and some of that funding is going to backlog and defer maintenance. And so that's our effort every year is to basically work on some projects that are deferred maintenance related as well as, um, new projects that have related to new construction and development.
What percentage of funding is going to back well?
I couldn't tell you right off the bat, but I can definitely get back to you with the percentage. Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I have another question. Good question regarding parks, just because I went to a park called Stan Martin behind McCandlin Elementary School. And the grass was really high in between, there was like the playground, the grass was really high. Do you not have enough slack right now or what's going on?
You know, I think right now, especially given the rainy season, sometimes the maintenance staff is a little bit more stag, uh. Uh, staggered in getting out there because you're just kind of waiting for the grass to dry before the, um, grass gets mowed. So that might be the reason, but I can look specifically to that proficiency, but no, we do have staff that goes on a regular basis. I think that intervals. For neighborhood parks, it'll be two weeks, um, unless, like I said, we're in the rainy season and then might be longer because the grass is wet and they basically will jam with the motor of the mowers.
Yeah, it was pretty high and I was kind of surprised, so I was like.
Is it as Martin part?
Yeah.
Okay, I think you look into that.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure, I had one, one question that I wanted to ask, um. Uh, and as far as you've said, Ben from the Fire Department, and this is not a surprise because I sent it to him a little bit earlier. And it has to do with undergrounding P G need lines in high fire hazard areas, which have been identified by Cal Fire in the East Foothills in South San Jose. You know, it looks like we have a very robust utility undergrounding, uh, program, um, and I just. Wanted to get the chief's thoughts on whether in future years that might be able to be done in, in those high fire hazard areas, so.
Yeah, do we wanna start with public works on that or?
Sure, I can, okay.
And I'm happy to give background, but, but maybe I'll start with you on the funding part side.
Sure, so the, the current program I mentioned is a very familiar with this, been early in creative on twenty projects, so these are projects funded by P G N E, the twenty eight. For local residential streets, uh, not, not for, um, fire hazards, it's focused on the local streets. The funding from CPUC, that's what the funding for twenty eight programs for truly, that's. The current funding for twenty eight project, which is supposed to sunset in twenty twenty thirty six, is it happy for you? By twenty twenty.
So, uh, um, in, in response to, thank you. Um, you know, P G N E has television commercials that I see every two hours about them undergrounding utility lines, which is awesome. But my question is, is there funding coming down from the P U C for that? Because I'm sure the chief would say it's pretty darn important, so.
What? Thank you. Um, so a little, little bit of background, I think that covers what, what's happening on the funding front, uh, from, from the fire department perspective. Our recent experience with P G N E and their infrastructure has been, uh, post twenty twenty, our most severe fire, uh, season ever. Uh, I think you all would recall the Public Safety Power Shut Off Program, that was an interim program where in high fire danger periods. Power would be shut off in critical areas, these, these high hazard zones, uh, or high severity zones. And in the interim, as that program was, was sort of a, a stopgap. P G N E had talked about infrastructure improvements, some vegetation management programming and some undergrounding. I haven't seen a lot of local undergrounding, but I will tell you that our local fire experience with our fuel types. It's, it's not the most common, uh, ignition source out there. We were highly populated and it's usually some act of, of a human that is starting our fires for us. Uh, we do this year, uh, have an intention of revising our, uh. Community wildfire protection plan annex in the area, which will include recommendations like that. Um, for working with partners to come up with solutions to, to hazards. So in the short term, I, I wouldn't say that I'm ready to lean in and say start undergrounding, but certainly it will be part of our assessment that we do this year.
Okay, cool.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, appreciate it. Sure, quick question for staff. I know when we were going through the housing element process last year, we talked about there being certain grant funds that were addressed due to, you know, our making parties. Are we, you know, good to go there? Have those funds been approved and incorporated into this budget?
Yeah.
I think, thank you.
Well.
And then second, I just wanna comment that D F P specifically on all of the great work on cycle and infrastructure in this budget. Between the San Fernando improvements, the downtown bike plan and the downtown mobile rehab, I think there's some really transformational projects in the works here.
If there's, Tom, just one follow up question, um, and I'm not picking on parks, I'd love to see parks do better. Um, has, has Parks Department considered getting behind the bond issue, um, for parks specifically?
Right, we have been analyzing that and looking at that on a regular basis and, um, so it's something that we've been exploring. We, there hasn't been a definitive kind of, um, decision made yet. There's something we're exploring and basically, um, just keeping tabs on to see what the appetite is for a bond.
Have you guys done any, any surveys or anything to see what the, what the, whether people would actually vote for that fund issue?
We have been, uh, looking at surveys and basically just, um, just seeing the appetite out there. But it seems like it's growing. Uh, I can, I don't know the specifics, but I was coming out of the ski manager's office, um, but it seems like it's more, um. Just favorable than it, it wasn't even a year ago, so.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say, if you're interested, um, City Manager's Office is pulling together feedback from departments. We're putting together a report that will come out sometime in May regarding ballot measures. And so it'll, it'll, okay, and so then I'll make sure that you get a copy of that once, once it's vetted and distributed. I just have a question. I, I, looking at the budget, it looked like libraries had like a lot less money than I would like allocated to them because I'm a mom, right? I'm always like, gotta turn in the books and it's like, it's closing. So it's nice to keep this, this, you know, maintained and built, but the community needs to use it. So also like extending hours and making it accessible for the community is, uh, is something that. I would like to see, how can we get more money to, to libraries and to parks? And I think with the fact that we have such a rich community, you know, a lot of high tech. I mean, I think people, because they love the parks and they love the libraries, they'd be willing to donate if they're in, you know. And I don't know, maybe that could be some sort of fundraising campaign to, to head up, I don't know, so we have two staff to really, um, you know. Reach out to the local community and to the tech community. To ask if they could fundraise for a new playground or, you know, whatever it is, a new bike rack or, uh, new trash cans or whatever improvements need to be made. I'd also like to see, uh, maybe, um, some playgrounds that are handicap accessible for handicap accessible children. Uh, just because I've seen stuff in like Brooklyn City and Palo Alto, but I love San Jose so much bigger and I, I haven't seen anything that.
Quite a few.
Okay.
So we do have, uh, uh, we have the firming, firming with the county, uh, around county grand for all inclusive playgrounds. And we just opened one at Emma Cruz Farm Park, uh, that's kind of iconic and, uh, the shape of a chicken. And it's kind of a regional draw, not just for San Jose, and so definitely be worthwhile checking that one out. And we have another one coming in at Camden Park, which of course we work into delivering that one, um, in this next coming year. Um, so there's a few that we have in the city, all inclusive playgrounds, not enough, definitely kind of working towards that. And then as far as, there's, there are programs at the city where we can partner with the community to fundraise for specific projects. Um, like a gift to share program, um, you can get more information on that and also obviously there's often adopt the park. Program for folks who want to, or residents who want to be more involved in just maintaining the parks. Um, we're doing more activities at the parks, like to be with the community, so there are, are some options there and I can leave my card. Um, so you can contact me if folks have park related questions and I can get back to you with more information.
What, what about the library extension now is just, yeah, 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 we have Jenny Choi from Library Department Deputy Director.
Hi. Um, yes, I, uh, I agree. I would love to see more funding allocated to libraries, so we're very fortunate, um, two years ago that we added the Sunday hours at sixteen of our location. Um, certainly something we, we can consider, uh, adding additional capacity and, you know, of course needing more staff to be able to run the additional hour. Um, I also had our disability access committee, so any sort of feedback, um, or ideas of programs that libraries, where we could be more inclusive for the community, that'd be great. And the last thing I'll just say is we do have a pretty robust, standardly public library foundation, so we are always open to accepting, um, gifts and donations through our foundation. I think they raised, uh, I wanna say like five million or something, but of course it's, it's designated for certain types of programs and we can't just take. Whatever money is donated and apply that to like.
Yeah, of course, you know, just because I have the opportunity to ask, I'd like to see more stages at public parks. Just because we have so many beautiful performing groups in San Jose, um, and public arts. Yeah. Thank you.
About four more minutes.
Sure, I have questions.
Go, go ahead.
No, go for it.
No, because.
You go first, go for it.
All right, okay. Um, it's for the, the airport and thank you for the, I had a question on the belly free project. Thank you for the email, but I, I wondered if you just might be able to talk. Thank you for the email, but I wondered if you just might be able to talk to all the commissioners about that project. And I'm kind of curious because I feel like freight is, it's a for profit business. So I, I, I just wanna know, are we building a facility and then leasing it to them so we're generating revenue? Or so if you could just talk about the project a little bit, that's great.
No, no, go ahead.
I'll be, I'll be the phone of friends.
Okay, thanks for the question. The belly freight facility is for the belly cargo that's in the belly of the car passenger aircraft. So where they have their suitcases, there's also cargo that comes in. And the belly car, we currently have a very small facility at this time. Now, in the past, when we have our, like seven international carriers, a lot of them were being freighted in and we were at the seams at that point. So it's to where they bring the, the belly cargo, they aggregated and then ship it out on trucks. It is a facility that is leased. So that's one, we do have a, do develop a business case to make sure that what we put in capital costs and amortize over a period of time, we can recover through the lease rates. And also, this facility will be the central receiving. Currently, the central receiving for all our concessions and other activities at the airport is right in the center between Terminal B and Terminal A, so right on the center. And so our main road in front of the terminals has a lot of trucks on it. And so when we move central receiving out to a combined belly freight and sun reception facility, it takes several trucks off our main road, which allows a lot more capacity for passenger vehicles as they drop their passengers off within the terminals. But yeah, we will be leasing it. The other thing I did put in the email is also, all our cargo and all our central receiving, the products that go to the, through the airport, there's a special screening that has to take place. So we just don't, wow, people just, you know, we screen every passengers, but we have to screen everything that goes in.
Sure.
Otherwise, into the belly of the aircraft as well. So it also incorporates the security screening for all the belly cargo and all the central receiving products.
Right, that, that actually, so it's not FedEx or UPS. This is the cargo that's coming in on passenger aircraft.
Correct.
Okay, that, that helps a lot, okay.
FedEx and UPS have their own facilities that they operate. So all cargo carriers have something separate. And this is just the, that comes into the belly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I, since we've reached six o'clock, would I be able just to schedule some time with you offline and ask about fifteen minutes of questions?
Of course.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I think with that, we'll wrap things up for tonight. I just wanna thank everyone from the city for making the time to be here. Really appreciate it. Oh, I'm so sorry. Hold on, hold on, hold on. We have to recommend that City Council, or we are asked to recommend that City Council adopts this report. So let's hold a vote.
Motion.
Yeah, we need a motion on that.
Motion.
Second. All right, so we have a motion to approve the staff recommendation from Commissioner Casey and the second Commissioner Cordios. Go to a roll call vote, special analysis wise.
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Bigford?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Oliveria?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Cordios?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yeah.
Myself, yes. That, I believe is nine, yes, and two instances. So passes. Thank you. All right, and with that, we'll.
Thank you.
So I will follow up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And a few, you know, for accidents, that sort of thing. Hopefully, it's. Well, thanks for the questions. I really appreciate them. Thank you, mommy. I wish to respond to them as far as like to present them with a back.